What's up everybody? Thank you so much for tuning in to this second round episode with Eli Arnold. If you're curious to learn more about Eli, go to check out his first episode, which we, as you'll hear on this, recorded way back, basically a year ago before this episode. So yeah, go check that one out if you're curious to learn more about him. I just wanted to do this intro because a couple of reasons. I'm kind of wrapping up all of my candidate interviews as the elections like two days away. But mostly I just wanted to make this intro because unfortunately with this recording, I didn't record our close up camera for me and Kristen. So you're gonna see kind of my old school, like first episodes that I used to do this with where you're gonna see the wide shot a lot more. So my apologies for that. It was my fault. We recorded this right in the middle of a lot of my busy, super busy time. I was recording like multiple episodes a week. This one was at night. So that's my bad. And I'm sorry. Maybe you like looking at the wide shot. So you'll be seeing a lot more of that. But um, but I just wanted to mention that. So it'll look a little bit different. But other than that, uh, you know, I hope you guys have enjoyed a lot of these candidate interviews. I certainly did. I'm a super political nerd, as you know, and I just love talking to people in these long form interviews about what they bring, what their candidacy and and just with their lives in general. So so with that, it'll be really interesting to see how this election finally goes. It's been a lot of buildup to this and I've been doing these episodes for a long time. And also I want to mention, obviously after this, I'm going to get back to some of my like culture episodes. I have some musicians and other people coming up. Uh, so so just keep that in mind, but I always will keep the political stuff kind of as a percentage of my regular episodes. But thank you for tuning in and I hope you enjoy this episode with Eli. I am so happy to have Eli Arnold back here again. Thanks for coming back, Eli.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I I think I was just gonna mention last time we talked was like February and there was like the ice storm going on.
Yeah.
So there's a lot changing, a lot has happened since then. And I'm just, I'm trying to do a bunch of second rounds. So I'm really glad you're back to talk before the election.
I appreciate the invite.
And Kristen, thanks for co hosting.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you weren't here last time.
I was not.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, um, I I'm trying to intro myself more. I'm Andy. You can follow me at Northwest Fresh Podcast on Instagram, AZC Film on Twitter. I'm so you don't have your mug. I was gonna say I'm jealous of your mug.
I know. I have, I have one of your liquid guts today.
I wanted to start just asking, well, first of all, I was gonna ask, this is a really dumb, but you guys know it's sea otter awareness week?
No.
No. So they're failing. Yeah.
I think it was something that Oregon Zoo was trying to promote. But obviously this will timestamp the episode. So when this comes out, it won't be anymore, but it is sea otter awareness week. I just wanted to start with asking you like, catch me up on your campaign. How's it been going in District Four? Was anything super notable since the last time we talked?
Since February? Yeah, a lot of things happened. Let's say I went, I've been to two events lately where there were like five new candidates I'd never heard of.
Wow.
Each time.
In District Four?
Yeah, we're like thirty now.
That is the most populous.
Yeah.
One, right?
Which is crazy to me, the idea of being like, what is it, a week till the deadline to join this thing? I'm gonna jump in.
Yeah.
There's only twenty nine. I'll throw my hat in the ring.
But all of you guys started so early.
Yeah, which I'm glad I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, you like, you've had no time to practice or make connections. It's weird to me. And I don't understand, maybe, I mean, I think it's a fun story. You pay your seventy five bucks or whatever and you're like, I ran for city council one time. And there's no bar to being on the, you know, you got the memento, the pamphlet or whatever. So I don't understand it.
It's it's anyone paying that seventy five dollars can basically.
Yeah.
Get in.
So that's a
There's no background check or anything, right?
No, no.
Probably not. Yeah.
No.
They're not fingerprinting you or yeah, it's whatever the people want, I guess.
Yeah. So that's been interesting. Now it's so crowded. Um, but yeah, I don't know. It's it's just been a really interesting experience all around. And now it's super busy and I am looking forward to Election Day.
Cause like you were saying, you've been going so early compared, I don't know, it seems like compared to a lot of people with it. Does it feel like the end? Does it feel like you got good momentum? You're going strong? I think you do.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, I feel like things are, yeah, they're going good. They've gone well. You know, found a lot of support. But you know, people are gonna get a thirty person rank six ballot. And so I really think the sheer amount of choices to make and
It's an argument against our CV, in my opinion. It's an argument against, I mean, brain trust voting may be the best thing. I don't really know, but an art, I think the best argument against it is the last thing the CD needs is to get more civic education before they vote on anything. Though, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah, I mean,
it needs to be as easy as possible.
Bad even when we had the previous, you know, it was
Between the ballot measures, just coming in left and right, if you have enough money to get enough of the signatures and this stuff. It's too much. It's gonna be the size of a phone book, don't you think?
I hope we don't have this many candidates next time. This is like an, we added an extra level of stress to this initial test.
Yeah. And actually, I'm, I'm the single transferable vote up. So I'm doing that I did with Kristen is coming out soon. And actually, they mentioned in there, they were still considering, I don't know if they made a decision, but having two books, one for candidates and one for all the issue or like just ballot measures.
That says it all.
And he also mentioned, I don't know if you remember, and you'll see it on the episode by this time, by this, when this comes out, but uh, they were hitting the physical limit of what the book could.
Yeah. The binding stress limit or something.
So that'll tell you a lot. And I'm actually gonna skip ahead of one of these because I was gonna ask you about, can you talk about the ballot order in your district?
Yeah. Uh, well, the county randomized the letters of the alphabet. And that is how you will appear on the ballot and thankfully, uh, near the top. So I really had my fingers crossed. Please don't make me last.
Okay.
And they didn't.
Cause I remember you mentioned to me the other day and I couldn't remember where you were in that.
Yeah, I think, I think Mitch Green and Bob Weinstein are ahead of me. And generally, everybody else is after, which is a real gift. Because when people are gonna feel so overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Are they gonna be like, well, I don't want to make my number one marking until I research all thirty, you know, like and we're, we're a left to right, top to bottom reading culture. We're gonna wanna start marking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was who's gonna make it all the way down to the thirty before they
Yeah.
get exhausted researching people.
Exactly. Voter fatigue.
Which which really means this experience of like the the pamphlet ballot experience is going to determine a lot here. Yeah.
Cause that's generally what passes, at least in my previous life as a what I thought was a good citizen. Um, that's what passed is my civic education was the voter's guide.
Yeah. Yeah, I enjoy, I actually, I really like the voting by mail here. I take like a week to do it.
Yeah.
So every morning I get my coffee and I'm like, I'm gonna vote on two things and let me do my research. But how many people are really gonna sit down and be like, all right, thirty candidates, let me give them ten minutes each. So three hundred minutes from now, I'll start ranking my city council candidates. Forget the rest of the ballot. Now, nobody's gonna do that.
I'm always curious how people do it. So how do you do? How do you do your research? What, when you say I'm gonna do my research, what does that entail for you?
It really depends on how much I'm already paying attention to the thing.
Yeah.
Of course, but I will do a lot of times like a general Google search, like let's just see what kind of things are popping up. You know, sort of read what's in the in the pamphlet. Uh, I'll usually check both the Willamette Week and the Oregonian and see what they've been saying. Yeah, and just kinda try to get a feel, especially if it's something that's like, I have no idea what this is, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's more than most people. I mean, that's more than I did.
Yeah, well, I was thinking, I wish I would have asked Tim Scott. I wonder if he knows if there's an average time spent with the pamphlet and all that stuff. Cause I feel like I do it in about thirty minutes or something like that, which isn't that amount, isn't that much time really, but um, but I feel like I do all my research, not with the pamphlet, like with all the internet and
I mean, you're doing a bunch of stuff like this.
Yeah, I'm talking to people.
I mean, Andy, yeah, I'm spending hours with each person is
But I feel like most people probably do it in like twenty minutes or something like that. I don't know.
Or less, maybe. I don't know. I don't, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I noticed scary, you posted your, what your pamphlet thing is gonna look like, right?
Yeah.
I saw that. Yeah. So people should go check that out, I guess if, or maybe that maybe they'll already be mailed out by then.
No, I just put a screenshot of it on Twitter.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I wanted to start with a couple topical things and I'm not trying to I I am excited about this WNBA thing.
Yeah.
I'm just, it just feels sometimes in the city like, like I I've still, I don't even like Major League Baseball, but I wish it would have been something like that. But I I assume we're all excited about it in the sense of
It's something.
It's something, right?
Bring in more activity.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's kind of your, your general reaction.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not a big sports watch, sports watcher.
Okay.
I like playing sports and I don't know if I'm like too narcissistic to enjoy watching other people play them.
Or maybe you don't have time or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, it's, I always felt weird like as, you know, growing up and stuff, it's like, you know, you gotta like love whatever teams from your town. And it's like, these people don't know you. You're not actually connected to this team. I don't know. It always seems strange to me. I so I really like playing them. But I've never, like, I don't watch football. I don't watch anything, but I'll play almost anything. I will say, I, I have gone to a few thorns games, which I have enjoyed. I I enjoy sports as a background activity for like drinking a beer in a public place.
Talking, I'm, for me, it's talking to somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next to me.
And I do see like parallels between that. I know a lot of thorns fans up here. So this like women's sports thing is kind of cool. I just wish we'd have, besides NBA, some other pro team. And I guess the WNBA is a pro team, but
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, I'll check it out. You know, I got two, I got an eleven and nine year old daughter, you know? And yeah, quite frankly, and men's, women's, like whatever. So you know, maybe, maybe cool for them to see the women's team instead.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna keep all the, these questions kind of together, cause I just, I really liked your post that you did about, you were on the waterfront, but you were just talking about all these downtown revitalization ideas. And I was just, I was like, this is what I wish I could hear from people on this show. And occasionally I'll hear bits and pieces, but you just packed it all into like one video, which I thought was really cool.
Got a minute and a half to make to get that video in.
You gotta get that real limit. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just, yeah. And in that sense, I was gonna ask you also about the Live Nation thing, because people are so divided about that. I just think anything like that is good. And I know Live Nation is like a huge company, but I was curious.
Who cares?
Yeah.
It's kind of like a separate question, right? Like, uh, how do we feel about this company's business practices?
Yes.
And do like, will their presence be otherwise beneficial in this neighborhood? And like, that's kind of a blighted spot.
It is, yeah.
And Inner East Side could really use some legitimate business activity to help kind of revitalize that area. And it's kind of prime real estate. It's on the waterfront. It's right.
Right by water.
Right across from downtown. And it's been a problem location for years now. Like, if you wanna see a dismantled bicycle, like you can go there. But uh, you know, it could use some other activity.
Some kind of anchor.
So, uh, you know, on that front, at the very least, it's gonna be great for the neighborhood. And we, we can use some more economic activity.
Yeah. And I also think, I don't know, and maybe this is just my opinion on this, but I feel like we used to be such a strong music city. And I know a lot of like indie musicians are against this. But I'm just like, just bring that back, like, you know, let's get going strong in the music scene again. And
Yeah.
What do you think? You just think it's
I mean, we can't support to the extent there's any support for these indie musicians at all economically or some, something subsidized or people providing spaces for them that are discounted, that's paid for somehow. And this is a way to pay for that. I mean, to me, any, good lord, in this city, it just seems like any business is a good business. Just, yeah, I mean, people are like consternated about it. I'm like, shut up.
I know, we've been
Let them in.
We've been trying to figure out like what to do with Lloyd's Center for like years and it's
Nobody else wants it.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, like Eli said, we gotta fill that. It's, it is, it's a black hole that needs to be filled somehow.
And and you said you're not into sports, but do you ever play an instrument or anything like that?
I can play very basic guitar.
Okay.
I actually took it up at the end of flight school and then went to Afghanistan and had thirteen months just sitting there. So
You could practice a little bit in there.
I could play, yeah. The first deployment, I worked on guitar. And then I took up landscape painting the second time.
Okay. I think I'm, I thought I remember you saying that. I don't know. Maybe I'm thinking of somebody else. Painting, that's cool.
Yeah, you gotta do something when you got time on your hands, something productive.
Yeah.
Do you like me? Are you into music? What music do you like?
Yeah, I actually like indie rock a lot.
Do you? Yeah. What do you listen to?
I mean, I like nineties alternative a lot.
Like what? What's your favorite?
I mean, I don't know. I'd say my favorite is now, but you know, I like all the old, old sound garden and Earl Jam and all that stuff.
Old school modest mouse?
I, my wife's a huge modest mouse fan.
Oh, cool.
I'm not. I, but I, you know, for I guess Portland stuff and like the shins and Elliott Smith.
So when you say indie, what do you, what are you into like right now? If you were gonna, are you listening to any indie stuff now?
I, you know, I don't know that I'm listening to any new.
Yeah.
Any stuff right now.
What old stuff are you?
It's tough, right? Cause I don't have a thing that like feeds me new stuff.
I know, I know.
But back, you know,
When there was a, well, we listened to the radio, it was different. Yeah.
Or like two thousand five, two thousand six, uh, I, I was in Germany, so I had to get my music online and I found a, an indie downloadable site and I got into like Arcade Fire and, um, you know, the Decemberist and a bunch of stuff like that back then. Uh, you know, I don't know, it's getting, the older you get, the weirder it's like, I got a chunk of stuff I like from here, a chunk of stuff from there.
Agreed.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Is that even, I don't even know if they're, are they still indie? I don't know. It was indie then.
Yeah, I think the music industry is kind of fractured.
Yeah.
You know, because we're not all listening to the same five stations anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And L media seems like it has.
Yeah. Right. And they can't like make money off of selling music. They have to tour.
Yep.
And it's got, if you're gonna make real, real money, it's a stadium, which of course we don't have.
Yeah. And I, you know, for Live Nation, like I won't go to shows like that.
Really?
No, I have no interest in going to the Moda Center to see a band. No.
Okay.
I now, I would much rather go see some small.
Okay.
It's annoying. It's, you're far away.
Yeah.
There's a big line to get a beer.
With you, cause, cause I was there the other day for the Theo Von show and
Right.
And it's like, I go to helium a lot and I prefer that where it's just like a hundred people. It's a way easier to get in, like it, I don't know, just the time it took me to get there and get back.
Yeah.
I like standup comedy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a good show.
This is, I'm just on a tangent now, but what was your, what was your first concert that you went to? You can remember.
You know, I, the very first one I probably ever saw, I think it was like Royal Crown Review or something, like some ska band in like nineteen ninety seven.
All right.
What music venues do you go to?
Somebody just took me.
Okay. You were dragged.
I didn't choose to go to a concert that I was like, I'd like to go see these people on my own for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I've seen a lot of good ones, Pioneer Square concerts, they've been doing the last few years. I've seen, um, Father John Misty and Tenacious D and lots of like
I didn't even know they went to Pioneer Square.
That's, yeah. And it's cheap and there's no line for the bathroom and you can see from everywhere and it's great.
Yeah.
I will say years ago, I was at that Dave Chappelle thing there. I
Oh, that was awful.
Yeah.
Where they immediately lock up your phone. I'm never going to another one.
Well, no, it was, he, it was like an impromptu thing at Pioneer Square and he went there and he had a really crappy PA and nobody could hear him, but it was, it was just like thousands of people.
A few years ago, he was in Pioneer Square.
This was in like twenty, like two thousand nine or something. It was a long time ago.
Wow, that's amazing.
During his hiatus?
Well, it was, it was like at the peak of his fame, really.
When he had his show? No, it was probably
It was a little bit after that, but yeah.
What comedy do you like?
Uh, I like lots of comedy. Yeah. I think, uh, boy, I mean, it really depends on on the time period, but I watch a lot of standup.
Yeah.
And I get my wife to go to, uh, go to helium occasionally. But yeah, there's so much
I'm glad we have it, because before that, we had Harvey's before that, but
Yeah.
There is something unintimate about coming to a show at the Moda Center, especially so we were at that Theo Von show, but I also saw Tina Fey there and Amy Poehler and it was fun. It was all fun. But there's something about a small, especially I think for standup comedy, a smaller room, even if it's the Shunitzer, which is a little big. The helium is the most fun, because it almost feels like you're just
You're just hanging out.
By yourself with them or something. Yeah, you're at a party.
And a lot of times you can talk to the comedian afterwards.
You always, almost always get to.
I saw Tom Papa there last.
Oh, he's great. Yeah.
He was really good.
I love his podcast. I forget it's called Breaking Bread, because he makes bread, but anyway, yeah. All right, I wanted to shift a little bit to, uh, deflection stuff. Cause I feel like, and maybe I'm wrong with this, but you've posted about taking people there or talked about that.
Yeah, doing the deflection process. Yeah, there's nowhere to go right now, but
Yeah, I just wanted you to explain that to people, like what that typical process looks like.
Is it in place?
So the thing that's happening right now, since September first is police stop somebody for possession of a controlled substance, right? If that person has no other issues. So they don't have a warrant, they don't have another crime. Nothing else is going on.
It's just drug use.
Just that. And it's between the hours of eight AM and eight PM within a certain area. Then you basically ask them, you want to do this? They'll probably say yes. And then you call a phone number.
They'll probably say yes?
Yeah, they'll say, yeah, I'll do deflection instead of going to jail.
Okay.
And then basically they've got thirty minutes to send you some peer support people. So somebody comes out and you know, you basically just turn them over to them.
And then the center has thirty minutes.
The, well, the outreach workers who come to the scene.
Is this a county?
This is the county's current system.
Yeah.
So individuals show up and then that's the end of your business.
That's the end.
And have you, you've had, have you had repeat? Same people doing that or?
I haven't personally had a repeat. I mean, I, I had somebody I'm told was already a repeat.
Okay.
Yeah. But I haven't had the same person twice. Um, but yeah, I'm not, and I'm not sure on the backend, how exactly they're doing the tracking and what does the, what does that look like?
Well, yeah, I was just thinking to myself like, okay, if I'm that individual, I might be like, oh, Officer Arnold's done here, his back's turned, he's walking across the street, peace out.
So I think, uh, was it this coin or K two? Which one's Blair Best on?
Yeah.
She, uh, she came out to one of the first deflections and interviewed the guy and yeah, he pretty much just got up and left, you know?
Right.
So, you know, and we've talked about this before, but my concern here is we have a moment of opportunity.
Yes.
With somebody who, this isn't somebody who's casually using drugs. This is somebody who is a third and Everett laid out on the sidewalk with severe addiction problems. And we're giving up maybe an opportunity to actually like push them into some sort of treatment. And you know, I, I don't know what stuff they have in place on the backend. Now, I'm sure the capacity for treatment and everything is still lacking, despite you would have assumed the last four years, we would have built a bunch, but we haven't.
And there's nothing in the county's budget.
I heard it was like a dozen beds or something they have there.
It's super limited still, which
There was never anything in the budget about it. That's what blew my mind. Like, somebody, I think it was, I mean, Julia talked about it. She called out some of the resource providers. And then I just did a word search for anything detox rehab, treatment, drug, MAT medically assisted treatment, anything like that. It's not in there. It, what's in there is drug supplies, harm reduction. That's all that's in there. Yeah. And she actually, and same thing with the DA's budget, when Mike Schmidt presented his budget. And I don't, I don't know how it works. When Nathan takes office in January, I don't know if he gets to revisit that or not, or it may just be set in stone, but there was nothing in that budget that can even considered the idea that we were recriminalizing drugs or, or what, what they'd be doing about it.
Yeah.
I mean, it really blew my mind. And, and Julia said, I under, I mean, she asked the county, what's happening? Is there anything besides harm reduction? Like what else is going on? How do we get these people off of drugs? And the county people just said, the, the people that were presenting the money that they wanted, that they all ultimately got was, um, hey, we're just out here to prevent disease. That's all we're doing. So, so and Julia said, I understand that. And I agree with her. I mean, she just said, I understand that there's a continuum of care. I'm sure harm reduction's on it, prevention of diseases on it. I'd just like to see treatment on it. I'd just like to see people off drug. There's gotta be an exit ramp for people to get off drugs.
Yeah.
Cause I agree with you. It's a perfect opportunity to
They're dying.
Yeah. And I think so much of our discussion around addiction is shaped by alcohol.
Yeah.
Because for a long time, that was really the primary thing. And that's where our, our treatment programs originally
Yeah.
came from.
The drunk tanker.
Problem is that the, the timeline for an alcohol addiction and the capacity to recover without permanent damage.
It's so different.
It's, it's so long.
It is long.
And
It can be very destructive, but it is much longer.
And it's late stages. It's as bad as any of them.
Right.
But you can, you can have a serious drinking problem for ten years.
Right.
And function and probably still come back fine and be okay.
And you might still have a job.
But you know, I talked to an eighteen year old today with a fentanyl problem and like, you're not going to make it long.
Yeah.
If you're already here. So I don't think we can apply the same strategies and all of our conversations around this are also so affected by the drug war, which made no distinction between different substances, which is a real mistake.
Yeah.
Different, different substances are
I guess wouldn't they say it made a distinction between crack and powder cocaine? And that's part of the, one of the biggest criticisms.
Oh, sure. But didn't
Generally, yes, you're right. Yeah.
But it treated marijuana and heroin the same.
That's right.
Which is crazy.
It's all the schedule one
Yeah.
drugs, basically.
And, and, um, we, we should be making distinctions. I don't think mushrooms are causing many problems on the streets.
Yeah.
But meth and fentanyl are causing a lot of problems.
And they're used medicinally a lot now. I know a lot of the country, but
Just, you know, there's, there's a, there's a lot of detail to each drug and its culture and, you know, the more we can tailor our responses, the better.
Yeah. And there is a whole kind of gradient. I don't know. They're all different drugs and they have different, I, I think what you're saying about alcohol is really applicable, because it's like, you need to have like data for each one and understand how to treat each one.
Isn't that interesting though? It's almost like, yeah, I see, I think about the county budget and it's almost like they're pretending like fentanyl isn't on the menu. It, it, it's just business as usual. It's foil straws. And I don't know, you know, I don't know what horrific disease we're preventing with a straw and some foil. I don't really know. And needles, I understand. I got that. I, I get it. I mean, I was a kid during the eighth crisis and I saw that. And, um, yes, and it hit drug users and particularly gay men very hard. And it was, that was terrible. But we, we seem to have gotten our arms around it in a way we can't get around fentanyl.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna ask, do you notice like, cause last time I was talking to you, you were saying like downtown, you see kind of more dealer busts and that type of thing. Do you see that still happening? Like, is it? How's the war on fentanyl going?
I see dealers.
I will say that the the high volume dealers have, they're avoiding downtown more.
Oh, really?
But that just means
They're moved.
Smaller dealers, there, there's more small dealers.
Did you read about? Oh, yes, with fentanyl in it. Yeah, I mean, that actually that'd be a safest place on earth, wouldn't it? I mean, that's away from downtown.
Some nice real estate.
There's still, there's, there's of course still fentanyl around. However, it. Uh, the users complain that it is harder to get. Decent fentanyl and so more people are shooting up actually now.
Shooting up fentanyl?
Because they're just unable to get the same high that they've gotten used to. So a lot more needles out and actually this is a big flashpoint right now um near, I guess, the stadium neighborhood at like. Uh Northwest nineteenth and Cooch, kind of near Saint Mary's Academy and Cooch Park. There's um, a group that's handing out needles on Friday nights uh shortly here. And there's a group of and so needles, there've been a lot of needles in there and there's more and more sort of drug use around the school.
I know some dealers are there, yes. It's a real problem.
They've like protested it, but it's um, I guess some, you know, masked up people have came last week and chased some of the neighbors. Uh neighborhood residents away and it's, you know. So you know, eh here again, like the willingness to draw distinctions like, okay, maybe there's benefit and harm reduction, but. Are some places better than others to do harm reduction or is a needle exchange better than a needle handout or like can we put order to this?
And why can't we couple it? Why? Why can't we couple needles with? Hey, can I take you to rehab? Are you ready to go? If you are, I can take you somewhere and just have a place for people to go.
This is a private group. Handing them out.
I think I heard, yeah, somebody was telling me about this group. That was like a downtown resident and they were just like, I don't.
As if we need that, like the county's handing out enough needles. Do we need a group?
Keeping it downtown. It seems like it retains that stuff downtown.
It's the one thing we are funding.
Yeah, is there anything else you want to say about that? I just always talk about deflection because I feel like. And and obviously by the time this comes out, they their internal deadlines October now, is that?
For the building? I I don't know. Did recently uh go take a look at the jail inverness. So inverse has two hundred and fifty or so beds that are unused.
Or all empty?
Well, the the jail's like three quarters used. And so the last quarter though, which is off in its own section is empty. And much nicer than I would have expected. It's basically like big rooms. There's like beds kind of with like cubicles kind of around them off to a side. TV reading areas, you know, like people are just hanging out. So these are expensive facilities to build. It's supervised, it's secure. You know, whether it's a. I mean, there should be some use we could put this to since county already owns it, whether this is a a shelter for people who have some mental issues who could use more supervision and. Might be easy to do on like outside. Or whether it's a, you know, drug deflection kind of facility or whatever. Yeah, it's it's can be separated from the rest of the place. Doesn't concentrate the problem in a neighborhood because they release people back to downtown, just like jail does. So it's already a space that's used to it. And uh just seems like a shame.
Remember when she came on?
Does it remind you of, because I always just think of Wapato and um what's it called now the?
Byby Lakes.
Cause it's like the same.
Of course, it's like that. Yeah, they won't get the county. Nicole said this, Nicole Bush is the head of the correction union. She's been on. My show rational Portland and this show Andy's show and she said the county cannot ideologically. The majority, I mean, they're a couple Sharon and Julia camp, but they cannot ideologically wrap their minds. Around the idea that a jail can be repurposed for anything else. Like they're so inherently, they're such inherently evil places. That there can't possibly be anything else.
I can tell you right now, uh, the army had me in much worse places. And I, you know, obviously being in jail stinks where but like you, the facility itself, there's nothing bad about. Like if you used it for a non jail purpose, it's perfectly nice.
That's why I think of um Wapato because it's just like. It it seems like we've just learned nothing and now they're trying to get this new center going and and we have all this space that's. Ready and available and it's just, I don't know. And I understand it's politically hard to sell because it's a jail, but it's just.
It shouldn't be. Where did we? How did that happen? Like at what chip? Who put a chip in our brain? Where that where everything just malfunctions at the word jail. I I don't under and I don't think that's true for the majority of Portlanders. I think the majority of the county is out of step with the majority of Portlanders. Like if you look at the. People want this.
Look at the, look at the enforcement for the camping, right? It's like sixty five percent of Portlanders want somebody arrested decided if they were are offered shelter and they refuse and they're still gonna be on the sidewalk.
They think the.
With what political leadership. You know?
Yeah, when you even saw the sheriff for a while was like, we're not gonna enforce this and then flipped. After a while, because I would imagine public pressure is just like, we don't, we want this.
I think it's an outdated recipe, you know, that they're using. And that's why they keep getting surprised by pushback from the public. Yeah, it's a it's.
I don't know when that recipe worked.
Oh, I mean, all these people got into office.
Yeah, I. I will say on my behalf. And I didn't vote. I did not vote for the people in office at county except for Julie Brum Edwards fortunately, but what I will say on my behalf about. The city uh and measure one ten, which I did vote for is that, you know. I don't think I thi- I don't think that ever worked, but yeah, somehow a lot of these people get into office, but I felt like. When I wasn't paying attention to things, I wasn't paying attention because I felt like things were going okay. Like I felt like until about twenty fifteen. When Mayor Hales did that, the just he called it safe sleep, sleep wherever you want, which I think just ushered in this. Monsoon of street homeless and this idea that that's a normal thing. Um, until then, I felt like things were pretty good. Like I didn't want to know the names of anybody on city council or the mayor and. In fact, I would prefer, I would prefer to live somewhere like that. Um, it wasn't until things got bad that I. And and maybe that's an argument about why I was such a dummy, you know, like that that's an argument about why you always have to be civically engaged because. Everybody else knew it, you know, everybody with a brain uh who saw what was going on around them voted against one ten and. I didn't, I didn't see it. So I mean, I guess it's a reason to be engaged, but I, yeah, they got, they got into office and then I think. Everybody kind of collectively woke up and was like, God, why can't we use the city anymore? And who are these poor people dying all around us?
No, I think that's exactly what happened with Portland that we had it really good.
We had it good.
And we got spoiled and we thought it was just magic, right? Not because. Of choices and forces at work that and and turns out. Uh, you we still had to keep making good decisions and.
Turns out it matters. Who you elect.
Yeah, and what you know, and and. Yeah, that and we've been allergic to making difficult decisions. And you know, using.
We're a passive aggressive people.
Apparently using a jail facility for some other purpose, that's that's tough, but that's exactly why you have leaders. You don't need leaders when everything is fine. Right? You specifically have leaders for tough times because the leader has a privileged position. To see was actually to gather information, to chart a path and then to convince people, hey, here's where we gotta go. And what we have to do and it's, you know, hard choices, but like that's, that's the whole reason for them existing. And we haven't wanted to do that.
Yeah, I was, I do feel like some optimism, which is weird because I'm mostly a pessimist.
You can be a happy pessimist.
Apparently.
And I absolutely, you know, encourage people to vote for redeem and Sam Adams, but even aside from that, I feel a lot of optimism about this new city council. And what the makeup could look like. I know, I know, I have no idea how it's gonna go, but. I think everyone has an idea what how they think it's gonna go and it's probably not gonna be.
I agree with you. I like a lot of the candidates. Like I like um more candidates than I thought I would.
Yeah, I mean, I feel, I do feel like there'll be a a handful or enough in the council that will that will put pressure on the county, hopefully. And in almost any of the mayors, I feel like would put, I mean, they're already.
Do you really? Do you really think? See, I know, I I hard disagree with that hard.
It's hard to parse what they're saying now versus one.
I feel some optimism and here's how I break it down because people ask me. It's not like a single thing. We're actually getting two things. So fifty percent of it is getting a city manager. That's a win. So on the fifty percent, we're winning just by getting a city manager. And removing these separate bureaus where like permitting goes back and forth between all these things. So just getting a unified command. And a professional to run things like P bot is a win.
It is absolutely.
So if even if city council was completely deadlocked and couldn't do anything. Still have made.
That's true. That's a great point. We with the city can function, hope, I mean, hopefully.
As long as city council can avoid doing harm. And get through a couple.
Historically true, but.
And you know, we'll see how the.
With the city manager and all these normal professional people uh running these bureaus that. It's not good. They can just fight all day and it's not gonna matter. I don't, I I mean, allegedly they're gonna legislate. So that you can do a lot of harm by legislating and maybe, yeah, if they're all squabbling, there won't be a lot coming out of it and then this. The city hopefully just runs.
I mean, hopefully, obviously, hopefully we get a really good city council, but I think it's gonna be key for city council to actually be careful. And not do harm. And so even if we get a good council, council probably doesn't, we don't want them to try anything crazy here coming out of the gate. We want them to, you know, manage the basics. Show stability in a transition period for all those businesses and investors and residents. And let the. City operations take place and I bet we'll find a million redundancies in there. There should be a lot of efficiency gains.
Yeah, well, it's funny. You mentioned that transition thing because uh one of the things Tim Scott and the city guy, James. Were saying, because I was asking him about what's the process for? Like, because I had heard there there's a ticketing system they're working on for the new city council for if you have an issue, you can like request a ticket or whatever, like a.
Constituent services.
And what he said was kind of, I don't know if it's shocking, but it was surprising to me. That he said a lot of those decisions are gonna be made by the new city council.
But there's nothing not shocking to me about about it. Yeah.
Including the uh separate office idea according to them would be determined, so. That's one of my concerns is that. In the first two years, and I know some of these districts are two year terms. Yeah, that it'll just be occupied with a lot of that transition stuff and maybe that's a good thing. Like you're saying, maybe that's stability and.
We're gonna be in a tight budget period too. Which might also help restrain. Program ideas.
Yeah, well, we've never funded our, I mean, our craziest ideas. I mean, it's not like one ten needed funding, you know, you just decriminalize drugs.
Are you, are you for that office idea, by the way? I don't remember if I asked you about the the separate office, the district office thing?
I mean, I guess it just depends on price point, whatever. I think it's probably good to have. I it's less of an issue for district four. Because city hall is in. But if you're district one, I think you are going to want a place. Way out there so people can come.
That's a great, you know what? I didn't think about.
I never thought about, yeah, just D four, the, you know, because it is.
And actually even I was late here today because I was coming from the west side and. Andy and I were kind of talking back and forth and he's like, God, there's nothing worse than that traffic on the west side and. Actually, even if you're, you know, district four is weird. It's the west side and and some of southeast. And so it is, it's actually very difficult to get from the far end of the west hills to. The end of district four even.
I always just that when you talk about, I always just think of the Ross Island Bridge and people just lining up to get on that thing to get east.
Eli and I know all.
I don't have to deal with it anymore, but I'm just like.
But you deal with Vancouver Bridge. Which is tricky. I.
City Hall is kind of centered for district four, actually. When you think about Linton, you know, way up by the Saint John's Bridge, all the way down to.
But you think about how far it would take and then you think about the constituents in district one and how a lot of these people probably. You know, they're working all the time. They may or may not have transportation. How are they gonna get there during business hours? Are they gonna have to take time off of work?
I think it'll be good and I think. One of the reasons why they haven't done it yet is because they're like, it's gonna be so expensive because we have to have security and we gotta have all this. Fiber optic stuff. I don't know if you have to do all that, like, can we just? Get a budget office that, you know, you can work at part time, people can come into.
Give everybody a work phone and a desk, I guess, yeah.
They all want uh iMac Pros or something.
You would need security. I mean, you would, and that's expensive, but and and Eli, wouldn't you also need? And it's gotta be private security because we don't have enough police, right?
I mean.
It would have to be.
You know, I don't know. It's like it, I downtown would be easy. Just rent a single office on the fifth floor of a big building and.
Available.
Which is available and the building will have its own security and nobody can just pop up to your, you know, like.
That secu- some security is better than others.
I'm saying like whether. There may be some easy ways to go about it and.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you that district one would be the first kind of need for that. There it's almost like a different world.
Take the bus from, yeah, East Portland, like, yeah.
Yeah, I always said, I think I've told you, but I I uh I've always said that like that's. The stuff I hear from district one candidates and just residents is like, that's what I see is like the critical needs of Portland. And maybe just because I'm close to it, but. Like physically, but I just, I'm like, those are all the livability issues that I'm concerned about. And I don't know, but I was curious, do you know, I asked somebody else this, what what's the other district that has a two year term? Do you know? Okay, so.
Which means we'll always be non presidential election years, which is interesting because it changes normally who.
Midterm.
Yeah, nobody's gonna vote for you because nobody's gonna be voting those years. I mean, it's so frustrating.
That is a tougher, yeah.
Oh, they did it. Um, I was told that they did it on purpose. Wait, did they tell us this? You've been.
Older, right? Midterm elections skew older. You get the youth vote in presidential years, one and two will.
Yeah, I don't, because I.
And maybe that skews more liberal.
We didn't ask them about it, but that is interesting, yeah.
Well, they said the reason they that was decided that way is because districts three and four. They said the the data says they have people who vote more in those districts. And so the idea to make. Daniel Demillo was explaining this to me because he's the numbers guy um. That to to make all the numbers make sense, they had to do something uneven like that. And so that's how they did it. They just. Were like, well, let's just take the districts where people aren't voting as much and give them four years.
I guess that makes sense.
And do it on a presidential year. I don't know. I don't know that it makes sense, but it was.
Well, it's it's good that. We we don't need a pamphlet as big.
Yeah, and it will be, I don't know, I just, I'm like a political nerd, so but I'm just like, well, now every two years we'll be having. Some kind of political contest, which is interesting to me, but.
And it's interesting. It's a complete turnover in three and four two rather than.
Oh, really? Okay.
You know, instead of. Maybe every district turning over part. Of them. There will be no continuity or potentially you could have no continuity in three and four.
Unless you're reelected, yeah, right.
Or or in any district whenever.
What is the term is is what is, is there a term limit?
Question, actually.
There's no term limit. So you could be on city council for the rest of your life. That's true. No one.
I mean, maybe that'll be.
Either people get voted out or they just. Leave or they run for something else, but um.
What is it now? Are there?
I don't know.
I want to say there aren't, because I know I remember commissioners that were there for ten years.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like Nick Fish was there for a long time. I I don't know. That's true.
I was gonna ask you about this. I can edit this out if if you don't want to. I wanted you to kind of do, I'm not gonna say anyone's name or we, I guess we can if you want, but I wanted you to kind of talk about. Like, how many parking tickets can you get before criminal consequences come up?
Unlimited.
Cause it's its own bucket of. There's no statute that says this many becomes a misdemeanor, becomes a felony.
About that, because I don't know, there's just a lot of conversation about that.
Financial and driver's license consequences, yeah.
It's all centered around, yeah, traffic and your ability to drive your own car and stuff.
Yeah, well, there's lots of things that are violations, which measure one ten made drugs violations, right? Just non criminal penalties. So they don't generally turn into criminal if you get so many or whatever.
But they could take your, I mean, I guess if it gets bad enough, they could take your license.
But it's not like it'll go on your record as a.
There's not like you got six speeding tickets this year, you're going to jail.
Yeah, it doesn't turn into anything with enough, yeah.
I just wanted to ask about.
But apparently you'd have to have one heck of a lot to get your license taken away, wouldn't you?
Yeah, yeah, I guess. I mean, yeah, I don't know.
I guess we know.
Trying to think about it now and I'm like, how, because I think that happened, right?
Suspended, but not permanently taken. In the state of or where Oregon is like, you can't drive here. I mean, obviously there must be people floating around like that and it makes you wonder. God, what did you do? I mean, it's just like how. Would have to be a daily thing for years or something.
And we are like, there was just something about this weekend. I didn't actually read if it, it was like it is Oregon, the home to worst drivers and I always just think we. I don't know how that study was ranking us. How do you, do you feel like we have bad drivers here?
Oh, God.
I don't know, you know.
Do you feel like you're a good driver?
I feel like I'm a good driver, yeah.
Well, you have, I mean, you have to, you're training everything. I mean, you've been taught to be, right?
I got a couple speeding tickets in like two thousand and one. Yeah, and then I went on active duty and uh, you know, the army will punish you for stuff. If you got a speeding ticket in the military. It was like, well, go ahead and put on your dress uniform. You're working all day Saturday. And I was like, well, I guess I'm not speeding anymore.
In civil life, if you did that, is all you mean?
Well, if like on the military base, you're going five miles over. There's. There really is no. So you're just like, well, I will follow the rules. And uh, that seems to have stuck with me pretty well.
I I I will say that I got, I've got snapped by the photo vans one. It was a long time ago, but that was one of my speeding tickets I got, you know, the the vans.
You know, people, I it drove me crazy when I first moved here, uh, because I came up from LA in two thousand and one and the speed limit here was fifty five. And everybody drove eighty five. On the highway in LA. Insanely slow.
Because all these people were following the speed limit or whatever.
Fifty five on eighty four. This is crazy.
No, it's weird. They like, isn't that interesting? Like. It does sort of seem with with exception that I I'm sure you see constantly Eli, but it just seems like in general. We don't, Portlanders don't seem to like laws or a lot of structure, but we do like the speed limit. Yeah, everybody's, the other thing is every, have you also noticed? Everybody spreads out into every lane. You know, there's no fast lane. There's no, they just all spread out. They're like, there's nobody here. I'm just gonna go fifty five over here.
Now you're speaking my language, Kristen. No, I just, no, because I was gonna say I I go up two or five every day and I see people going way less than the.
I'm glad uh the, I think the worst driving I've seen was in um Brazil. Driving in some places in Brazil was a little like, well, I hope I return this car undamaged.
Hair hair raising kind of stuff. I was gonna ask you about your shelter thing and I know the last time I talked to you, you were like still trying to do it, but I know that's something you want to do. Just explain that to people and like what you're.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we have a serious problem, whatever that problem is, right? Let's say the. I mean, we do have a problem with this. Let's say the most serious problem is gun. I mean, we do have a problem with this. Let's say the most serious problem is gun violence in your city and you are an elected official.
Which we do have a problem with that.
It's time to go start, you know, being on ride alongs on Saturday night and you know, like go gather whatever information you can have, get as much firsthand experience you can have, just to, to give you context when making choices around policy and decisions. So that has always felt weird to me. So seven years ago, I started working downtown as a police officer. I'm in homeless camps day after day. And we talk about it so much, we spent billions of dollars, but I never saw a county commissioner in a homeless camp.
Isn't that interesting?
I never saw.
Sharon Myron does street medicine. I will say that.
And, and I'm not saying some people like I, I have seen a couple city council members come on ride alongs or what, but like to me, that would be, that's the first.
It's like immersion.
Calling, right? Like it's time to go look.
Yeah.
And, and what's been so frustrating about is the way we talk about it has been so not grounded in reality.
Right.
And maybe it would have been a lot more grounded if people spent some time there. And so yeah, to that end, I just said, you know, I'll, I'll stay because there, there had been some back and forth about homeless shelters. And like, I'll, I'll go stay in one. Like, let's see, let's see what it's like. Oh, you know, and I went and toured Bybee Lakes and like, I want to see what's going on and what does it look like and how it works. So I don't know how you it seems like a good way to gather information. Deflection has started. Deflection is happening all the time, ten blocks away from the county building. Come watch a deflection. You're making big decisions and spending lots of money.
Isn't that interesting?
Maybe if you watched one, you'd be like, oh, maybe we could do this different.
That's a great point.
And you might not know what thing you don't know that you might suddenly find out.
Or send a staffer at least with a notepad or an iPhone to.
It informs you a lot about.
That seems cowardly to me.
It is cowardly.
Come yourself. But like you'll, you're gonna be okay. Come get a look at it.
Yeah.
I feel like, you know, in the military, there was a lot of value in the like, there was a lot of responsibility. Like if there's a problem like, oh, this is your problem. You're gonna go fix it. You're, you would go try to fix it.
It does seem like, yeah, there's not a lot of ownership.
Not write about it, not make a speech.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I actually felt like that's why when Sharon Myron would talk about what her program that she wanted to see implemented called Built for Zero, or when she would, actually when she talks about the ambulances. Because she's an ER doctor and she does do street medicine and she would be out on sidewalks and packing wounds and things. It carried a fair amount of credibility in a way that a lot of other policies didn't, but from people who weren't seeing anything like that.
Yeah. She's, I mean, she's been a very important voice for calling out a lot of this stuff. And it's funny, I've actually, some candidates are constantly sort of attacking her for doing so. And it's like, somebody's gotta tell the truth about what's going on here. Uh, so I really appreciate what she's had to say.
Yeah. Yeah. And what I would say is, why aren't these candidates out? The candidates who are criticizing her, where are they?
Well, another one that drives me crazy, PSR. Everybody has an opinion on Portland Street Response and I have worked with them at work and people are asking me now about them. So I went on a ride along with them. Let me go talk to them and see it from their point of view. Okay, here's what I think about. But like, there's all these people declaring them whatever.
Yeah.
Based on no experience.
Right.
Tell us what you saw.
Yeah, I was curious too, what you took away from that.
Yeah, I think, I think one, they've, they've been fought over as an ideological
Yes.
And that's always a problem.
In my opinion, that's how it started though.
They're viewed a lot of the time as the magic, the kind of opposite of the police coin.
Yeah, it's like, how do you feel about police? You, you love or P, love or hate PSR based on, on that. So.
They started from an unfair place or not, depending on your point of view.
I think the whole creation process was tinged by.
Yes.
Right, you know, ideas and feelings and whatever, but fine. We've got this thing now. Okay. Well, how do we make it work and what is it? But people are out there declaring it perfect. And other people say it stinks. Well, let's, what is it doing? It's a tool. So what I see, and I think the, the employees I talked to, we kind of came into agreement. And by the way, I'm like, as a police officer, it annoys the heck out of me that people react to me based on
Right.
Their ideological positions and not the work I do.
Right.
You know, I can see the nuance in it. So I, I think they feel the same. They were getting, we saw some people giving some positives and negatives during the day, not based on whether they actually did something worthwhile or not.
Yeah, that would be tough.
Total judgment.
Yeah, it's just, it's annoying, you know, like, so I think there, there is work that they can do that is useful. However, right now their scope is too limited.
Right.
So right now, they're not very useful. Because they can't transport people. They can't write mental health holds. They can't respond to mobile people, people indoors.
Oh, really?
And even if they could write mental health holds, isn't our civil commitment, I mean, our threshold. Sharon Myron talks about this all the time too. Our threshold for civil commitment. It is wildly out of whack with the general standard in the United States anyway about danger to self or others. I mean, here it's gotta be, you practically have to have a gun to your head, do you not?
I mean, that's, so that's, there's kind of two layers. And it's funny, a lot of our problems here have this. It's like, so big picture. Are we solving the thing?
Right.
Might be one answer, but in the moment, are we help, are we doing something beneficial? Might be a different answer. And so a lot of times right now, people, yes, they should be going to civil commitment and getting some sort of longer term stabilization and they're not getting that. But in the moment, uh, and I just saw this today, uh, you might be a lady who's non-communicative, walking around the middle of the street with no pants on. And right now, this is not a safe place for you to be. You write a mental health hold. We're gonna go to the hospital for a few hours and get checked out and maybe come out with some clothes and hopefully in a better place than we are at this moment. So there, you know.
Street response can't do that.
No, they can't.
Only police, fire, I'm assuming could do it, maybe.
I don't know if chat can, fire can't generally.
Chat is community.
It's the fire action team.
Yeah.
Fire bureau's team, right?
Yeah.
And their part, can you remind everybody what their scope is, what chat scope is?
Chad, so I haven't worked with them a lot, but I think they deal with more of like the low sort of like the more minor, tends to be street connected medical kind of calls that aren't an emergency, but need
Something needs attention. Okay.
Project Respond can write mental health holds.
And what is, where does Project Respond sit in terms of the food chain? What bureau are they in?
Their county.
Their county. Okay.
They're the county's twenty-four, seven, high acuity, mental health response.
And what can they do?
They can write mental health holds.
They can. Okay.
It's like the county's version of PSR, but they can.
It's a higher, higher acuity longstanding
Okay.
Equivalent with more powers.
Do you see them out and about much? I've never seen them out. Oh, do you? Okay, good.
They'll call and they say.
Oh, you, oh, and you can call them and say, can you come here?
Yeah, you can say, hey, I've got a problem and, and
So you work with them directly.
Say, hey, we've got a guy who's on our caseload and we need him to go to the hospital. We need you to come with us to do this.
Just transport. Can, can, what is it called again?
Project Respond.
Yes. Can they transport? Project Respond transport?
No, they don't transport.
Oh.
But they can write the holds.
They're not driving, yeah.
So they can write a hold, but then they have to sit there with this person until somebody gets there who can transport them.
They, well, normally they'll go buy ambulance. On a hold, they're gonna go buy ambulance. So the, the benefit of PSR having transport abilities is sometimes you just have a person where it's like, you're not doing good right here.
Yeah.
But maybe I can drive you to Blanchett House and you can get some lunch or maybe you're causing some, oh, yeah. Or I, I recently had a lady standing on an ambulance that was trying to deliver a patient and it was like, and she was just too high. She wasn't hurting anybody, but she, she needed not be there and she didn't need to go to jail and.
But you're the only one who can do this. That's what I'm hearing. Can chat transport people?
Uh, I don't know if chat will transport. I don't, I.
So police are really the only people who can.
Or an ambulance.
Yeah, or an ambulance.
I mean, good lord, though.
But, but PSR should be able to.
Yes.
Because this lady, we just agreed that she would feel safer, because that was her issue. She would feel safer at Blanchett House. Okay, I'll drive you to Blanchett House. No, no more problems for the rest of the day. Right? PSR should be able to do that.
That's right, yeah.
And obviously it's safer for the rest of the community as well. Yeah.
Yeah, you know. So they, they need that ability. There was limitations put on the kind of work they could do, uh, when they got started. Well, they've been going a while. I think it's, you know, it's probably time to reevaluate. How do you guys feel safety wise about doing some of these things? Are there, are there some things we could put in place that would make you feel comfortable expanding to these other call types?
My understanding is that was part of the police union ballot measures that they put together was to make it so that Portland Street Response could transport people and do things. I mean, I, they didn't. My understanding is they didn't make it past
Right.
The judiciary, but.
I didn't know that was part of it though. Yeah.
Yeah, no, part of it was strengthening Portland Street Response.
Yeah.
Cause but the police don't want to sixty calls dumped on them. I, right along I went on, it was at night and they don't you know, all these calls would be dumped on them by a lot of them, by PSR just being like, well, here's all the people we couldn't.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing is their hours are limited, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So they can, they can be expanded, but they need, they need more things that they can be useful in.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, with that expansion. And I, I think we can do that. You know, it's, it's not a moral issue. It's just, how do we design this program to be effective?
Yeah. And I hear what you're saying. It's, 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 because I, what bugs me too about it is when people just want to throw money at it. And it's like, I also think it's like policy. Like the transport ability, that would be a lot of policy decisions.
You've got to say where the money's gonna go. That's right. That's right. You can't just pour it down the black hole.
Money is part of it, but it's just, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I usually when I hear that from people, those are what I would call anti-police people, candidates, but.
That's what the Save Portland Street Response, that Friends of Portland Street Response, I don't understand it because I don't know anybody who wants to get rid of Portland Street Response. I actually don't. I, I've never heard anybody say that. Most people just say, I wish they could do more.
Yeah. Is it, I'll go ahead. Did you mean to say something? Is a perfect time because I was gonna ask you about.
Could you do that? Could you, can council expand street response?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that you could do as a city councillor.
A program, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's totally doable. I just want, you know, and uh, I'm happy to do it. We just need to make sure we give them greater ability to make an impact when they show up to a thing.
Yeah.
Set them up to succeed.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna ask you about, maybe you've heard this more, but when, when I, I was at a district three event with you. And I, I asked another candidate about this too, but I, I was just kind of taken aback because I heard a couple district three candidates there talk about this police staffing thing. And say, you know what I'm talking about already.
I do, I do.
What was it?
Uh, they said, they just asked all of the people on the panel, do you think we need more police? And there was a couple of them that said we're fine where we're at. And actually just read a thing on Real City Reform about this too, of all the candidates that agree with this. That keep the staffing levels what they're at right now, which I consider historic low.
It, because it is, yeah.
Keep it where it is, but rearrange, kind of shuffle the.
Yeah. There's no.
Like that's as a police officer.
Like a fun thing to say, but it's like. I mean, really, it's a skeleton operation.
Yes, it is.
So there used to be white collar crimes detectives and burglary detectives and like, like all not, like all of those things, which those are kind of important things, but they've all been stripped.
Yeah.
Like burglary is.
Again, with the chip in the brain. Like this is what we're used, we're used to this garbage.
Staple positions.
Yeah.
It's not okay. Yeah.
It's, um.
Yeah, right. No burg, no burglary investigations. Yeah. I mean, it's.
Yeah. So there's no, there's not like ninety people just sitting somewhere.
Right.
Doing nothing of any use. Uh, everything has been stripped.
Cause it, and maybe I'm remembering this wrong, but I thought somebody there was saying something like that of like, there's a lot of people doing desk work that we could get out.
Well, there are, but they're on like probation. It's because they just got out of DPS ST or something and they have to go do their precinct rotations.
To me, it was just a fundamental misunderstanding of how these roles work and.
I mean, they're not staffing people at desks purposely keeping them out of squad cars.
Yeah.
Right? I mean.
There's some injured people sitting at a desk until they get better or something. Yeah.
Yeah, or somebody in a disciplinary process, maybe who's on ice somewhere, but God.
If there was the ability to throw more people on patrol, they would be being thrown on patrol.
Yeah.
Uh, because patrol is suffering.
And central precinct is too, it's so big. I think people forget it. Isn't it true? It goes all the way from the west hills to to Caesar Chavez.
Yeah.
Yeah, that it's like forty-two, almost forty-three square miles. I mean, it's a bit, it's big.
Yeah.
And if you've got, if it's summer, if it's night and you've got nine people or something, that's old town. It's downtown. It's Chinatown. That's it. That's all they have.
Oh, sure.
Bike squad isn't separate from PBB. It's part of it.
It's interesting also, if you think about our new city council districts, and then you think about, there's only three. You got central, east and north precinct for police, which is.
What if you have a DV call in the west hills and somebody's, everybody's around in Chinatown, Old Town, Downtown, and somebody's got to get up there. I mean, let alone go through Boak, get through the Bureau of Emergency Communications and get somebody online. I mean, i- if they're dealing with so, it's very scary to think about. They are dealing with so few people.
You get, say way down in southwest, you get a serious DB or you have a homicide.
Right.
And you've got nine patrol officers working for two hundred and twenty thousand people. Well, guess what? A homicide will eat up a good eight, nine.
Most of them.
Uh, to, you know, perimeter and custody and like it's resource intensive.
The blood's flowing.
What about all those other calls that are coming in?
Yeah, they're all in the queue.
Yeah.
So it, people who know, people who've done right alongs know this. All you do is go from call, isn't it true? It's call to call to call to call to call. And there's almost always calls pending. I mean, the idea that anybody would have time to even go through Dutch Brothers line is like, that, that's a luxury. Is it not? I mean, it's, yes, you get breaks, but, um.
Yeah.
And I, I, most people, I haven't seen, what I've seen is most people don't take them because they're just they took that job because they care about people and it's, it's not ticky tack calls. It's like a stabbing, a shooting. Somebody strangling somebody.
There's, there's a lot of stuff that happens. I mean, you get, do get times where you're like, oh, this is a lucky morning, you know, but the problem is you have an unpredictable demand. And so, yeah, there was, what was this? Like last year, there was where there was three simultaneous shootings and they were like, they had to just leave one person at one. Because there were like two new ones have started.
Let that sink in.
Um, how do you handle that across the city with so few people and actually do what you have to do at them? It's, there, there's not enough. There's just not. You can have too many police officers. There's, I know there are places in the United States that have too many police officers. And I know there's places that have too few and we are a poster child of too few.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, um. Let's try to remember what I was gonna say.
That's really disturbing that there are people who.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I was thinking a second ago.
That there's that false narrative out there.
Shocked because I think, I think, uh, this thing I was reading, they were saying there's thirty candidates who kind of felt that. Obviously there's a hundred city candidates.
You know, Eric Zimmerman in your district told me the other day You know, Eric Zimmerman in your district told me the other day that he was, I think it was a district four forum. It's, I put it up on my Instagram, on the Russian Portland Instagram. He said that he was at a forum, a candidate forum where the question was if somebody um engages in criminal behavior and, and this is post measure one ten reform, right? The recriminalization of hard drugs. If somebody is engaged in criminal behavior, should police be able to confiscate their drugs?
Yeah.
And he said, most people said absolutely not.
We'll see. Uh, Northwest Examiner, Alan Clausen hosted that thing at Lincoln High School. So they're gonna put up everybody's answers, I think. They might, they may already be online.
Wow.
Um, they asked a bunch of hard, and a lot of them, that one wasn't a hard question, but they asked some hard ones where it was, ooh, this is a tough, because there's no nuance to this and it's, and a lot of people really were upset about having to pick.
Hmm.
But you know, it's interesting to see if you're forced, which way.
Cause you had to pick yes. Yeah, that's what Eric said. I should have prefaced it with that. You had to go yes or no.
That should be an easy one.
But it blew Eric's mind. I mean, he was just like, of course it's yes. I mean, it was just kind of like.
Yeah.
He said it was a bizarre, it just, it was, it was weird to him, but um, and he works at county. So he's seen, there's a lot.
But you wanna talk, you wanna talk about who lost out on ballot order?
It was Eric at, poor Eric.
Like last.
Okay.
Oh, that's too bad.
I was crossing my fingers. Please don't let me be last.
Yeah, no, I know.
If anyone's listening to this, look at the whole list of whatever district you're in, cause yeah, it's randomized and yeah.
But Andy, I think it's important and people should watch the episode and do their own takeaway. My takeaway from that ranked choice voting episode that you brilliantly put together with Tim Scott from the county and James Echols from the city of Portland was don't rank anybody that you don't want to see on city council. Don't do it.
Yeah, don't think about it because they explained it pretty decently, I would say, but don't think of it as the worst last, like just if, if you don't like somebody, don't even put them on.
Or even somebody's that's like, ah, I don't like this person, but I'm just gonna throw them on there.
Yeah.
No, no. And I, I mean, unless you really want to see them on city council, they, they're, they shouldn't be in play.
Right. Cause there could be situations where if somebody gets a really high percentage and wins one seat, they're gonna fill those other two seats with.
They will keep pressing the button.
Yeah.
Until all three seats are filled. It's, it was, it's one of the scariest things I've ever heard in my life. That's just my opinion. The other takeaway that I had from that though is um, the, in response to the question of what is the minimum to win, there isn't a minimum to win. So everybody out there is saying there's going to be twenty five percent of the vote. And then people get to go on to city council. That's untrue. It's, it just depends. It, it's, they're gonna push the button enough times until all three seats are filled. Was that your takeaway too?
Especially, and I still get confused with, but sometimes, but especially in the situation I just pointed out, you know.
Your vote is.
Yeah. If you have a, if you have a ninety, if somebody can't, can't get, can't get ninety percent.
Right.
They're gonna find the rest of that percentages to kind of.
They have to, because they have to fill all three seats. I just think it's really important that people understand that you keep going with these votes, your vote will ping pong around and that two and three that you think, oh, this is my number two, and I don't really care for this guy, but I'm gonna throw him on number three. Don't do that because that person is suddenly going to have the kind of, an incredible amount of power when your vote gets transferred to them literally.
Yeah. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention about the police staffing thing was, I just always think of what Terrence Hayes says about like, when we're this low staff, we're just overworking people and over.
It's dangerous.
Even anti-police people that complain about overtime, that's what they're, you're feeding into that. You're just.
Right.
Paying more overtime and it's, you know, obviously I just feel bad for the officers and stuff, but.
Well, it's bad, it's bad for the officer. I mean, one, it's wears you out, stressful, but also um, it doesn't feel good to not be able to do a good job for people who need you to do something. Cause you're like, I have to, I, I got ten minutes here and I'm on to the next thing. So that's bad for them. And then it's also bad for the person who needed help, right?
Yeah.
I bet you hear this all, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, and for people that complain about the police budget. It's like, well, you're just adding costs to, you know.
I bet you hear this all the time, but I'm constantly hearing, gosh, I sure wish they bring back community policing or neighborhood policing. And I'm like, yeah, well, you know, what's interesting? We have neighborhood resource officers. We actually do have that.
Yeah.
Bike squad is one of the neighborhood resource teams and RTs. Uh, you all are in central precinct. Um, that's your day job. Obviously has nothing to do with your candidacy, but I'm sure you hear all the time, boy, Eli, I sure wish they bring back community policing. And I bet your response is, I sure do too.
Yeah.
You know, if we had the means to do it.
Yeah.
We'd be doing it.
It's, I mean, it's a luxury because it's, it's, it's what you would like. But you have to have enough people to go to the calls and then have enough time to just be embedded when not in an emergency.
And you're triaging calls because um, this is a orderly, public, safety oriented system, which means it, if you've got a bunch of pending assaults and a shooting or a stabbing comes in, that's gonna whoosh up to the front of the queue.
Yeah.
And, and then this argument about how like, well, there was a, I mean, I've, we've heard this on this show. Oh, I had this interaction with a police officer and he was an a-hole to me. And I didn't care for his attitude. And I, I mean, I just thought to myself, I, if they had any idea about what you all are rushing to um, in regard to call after call after call, yeah, it's, it does. It would, it would hurt. It could hurt your um, public, person, the public perception of who you, who you all are. I mean, it doesn't do any good for anybody. It's what you just said. It's like a low amount of police. It's not helpful. This defund thing and move them around and um, screw around with their numbers and throw a bunch of them into social, throw the money into social work like that is going to increase the amount of Nate, probably, probably, I mean, not for sure, but negative interactions that people have with police.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, and again, you're not getting good customer service, right? When nobody came for forty five minutes, you're gonna be upset. And when they don't have that much time, you're not gonna be satisfied. And when they're like, oh, I'm on this call, but something else more important is now happening. It's gonna be hard to, you know, I, there's just, it's a, it's a systems problem. And you know, there's some work to do there to make better customer service possible.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and there's some other stuff, especially as you free up capacity, I think that could be done to sort of improve relations, but having somebody, ideally, there'd be somebody assigned to every neighborhood every day and it would be regular. Uh, that's the goal with it's a.
That's what a lot of cities have, like even big cities, really big cities, that a lot of these neighbors have their own cop. It's crazy.
It's good because you actually find out, it's, it's super helpful because you know, picture will come out from a surveillance camera, camera and be like, oh, this guy burglarizes this place. And be like, oh, I know him.
I know that guy.
You know, he's the province, I, I know who that is. Uh, it's, it's super useful to know all the details of your neighborhood. Like, oh, what exits are there from that target?
Right.
When something's happening like, yep, I worked this neighborhood for years. I know.
And see, that just sounds so luxurious, but other functional cities, functional cities have that and we just, we don't have it.
It's a great point though. Yeah. It's like, cause I do hear that, like you do all the time of we need community policing. And it's like, we can't start building those relationships with the community until we have staffed and capacity to do that.
It's good. That's what you want.
Yeah.
And we should work toward that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the, I guess the follow-up to those candidates should be, what do you intend to do to fund police so that we have enough to do community policing?
Yeah.
I want to say, I want to say one of those guys did a ride along with you.
One of the candidates?
Yeah.
I've taken lots of people on ride.
Good. Well, that's great news.
Candidates and people on city council and.
Good. Yeah.
I tried it. Any human being who will go on a ride along, I will take on a ride along. I only became a police officer because I went on a ride along.
Yeah, I remember you telling me that.
Well, I expected.
Yeah.
That's right.
Um, okay. I have a couple goofy questions here. I know. Is there anything else you want to talk about before we get into these?
Get to the goofy?
No, this is one of the best parts.
Uh, these are all new.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I'm gonna start with, this sounds kind of funny, but I'm gonna, I'll do my own. I want to know, I want to know your nut rankings and yours too. Mine, top three. So mine is pistachio, peanut, cashew. I misspelled almond, but almond is my fourth.
Hmm.
Huh.
You didn't have to tell us, you didn't have to tell us that you misspelled it.
I put almost.
Can't see here. No.
No, I mean.
That was you were telling on yourself.
You know, I feel like pistachio, cashew and almond have to be in there.
Okay.
Is, is cashew technically a nut?
It might not, it might not be.
Seed or something.
It's like a, cause the cashew fruit, it's weird. It's like an apple looking fruit that has this thing growing out of it.
I think you're right. Cause I looked it up and it wasn't described in that family or anyway.
I mean, it's, seems like a nut, but I, I think it might. Yeah. Be a seed or whatever.
You said a different one though. You said.
No, pistachio, pistachio, cashew and almond. I think makes sense to me.
Peanut, you're not putting peanut in it.
A seed. This says it's a seed. And it actually, it says, this is from McGill University in Canada. Cashews and almonds are not nuts. So you. Almond wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna make it.
Shoot down my whole.
I'm, I'm sorry. But there are other nuts.
Just tell, yeah, what's yours? Do you have a top three?
Um, I like macadamia nuts.
Oh, those are good.
But it was an acquired taste for me in adulthood. I, but I love them and uh.
Good in cookies.
Or chocolate with chocolate. Yeah, they're good.
Or just, yeah, I mean, I, I just eat them plain or, yeah, I, I think that's my number one. My number two is um, hmm, peanut and three is pistachio. Yeah. Those are fan favorites apparently. Yeah. I, I, that's interesting.
Yeah. I was thinking about this because I'm trying to remember this intern we had or got a bunch of, I'm trying to remember what it was. But I was gonna say walnut is definitely in the bottom of my list.
So disgusting.
Supposed to be like the best one for you too.
I guess, it is probably the healthiest, but it tastes the worst.
So bitter. I think they're so bitter and they ruin everything.
Looks like a brain or something.
It does. Do you like walnuts? You like them? They're fine. You'll eat them or not. Yeah. Right. Okay.
Uh.
Will you eat something with walnuts in it? I won't.
I mean, I don't.
Do you? I won't do it.
I don't know. I wouldn't go out of my way to.
They degrade a brownie or a, they degrade fudge, fudge.
There's nothing they don't degrade in my opinion, but yeah.
Um, do you have a favorite Taco Bell item?
I, I am not a fan of Taco Bell.
Oh, my God. What?
Are you serious?
I like, I feel, I mean, Mexican food's great. Like burritos, maybe.
Like authentic.
We all agree it's not Mexican.
But, but like, how hard is it to make a good burrito? Like, and frankly, there's a million places in town that'll sell you a seven dollar great burrito. So it's not even like they're, they're cheaper.
I mean, this is gonna sink your candidacy, but no, I'm just kidding.
I just, uh, I don't know.
No, it's, that's okay. It is, it is. I mean, it's trash. Let's just admit like it's.
Of course it is. I mean, all fast food is.
I grew up in California and I feel like you should, there's so many good burritos out there and tacos and.
Is there, is there a specific place or burrito you, you want to shout out? Did I ask you this before?
You know, in the winter, uh, I like to go to Poppy Chulo's, uh, on the brewery blocks, uh, Northwest thirteenth and get a birria burrito. It's like when it's really cold and I'm like on the bike and it's like wet and like dip it and it's just a huge massive cheese and, you know.
And you carry that thing around on the bike, like on the water bottle?
Keep on standing there and pops in his mouth after three bites. Right?
What do, do you have a favorite Taco Bell item?
Yes, I do. Um, Taco Supreme, Taco Supreme.
Yeah.
Crunchy. Um, and I like, I, this is weird. Beans and cheese. And I get it with, I have a whole thing. I get it with the hot, no, just pinto's and cheese, pinto's and cheese is what it's called.
Yeah.
And that it's the, it's in a styrofoam container and then I get hot sauce with it. It's so, this is so disgusting, but I squirt the hot sauce on top of it and I'll like swirl it around. Um, and then I.
I don't think it's that gross, but yeah.
Um, and then, yeah, no, actual, it's pretty, oh, you know what else I like? My number three item. My number three item is the bean and cheese burrito.
It's good.
It's so flipping good.
This is one of the most trash things I'll admit on the show, but that's one that I'll, it's, it keeps overnight. So you can get.
Oh, it certainly does.
Those in the fridge.
Um, it's good cold the next day.
I would, I, I had a follow-up question that's kind of ruined, but I can adapt this, I think. Do you have a favorite sauce? I was gonna ask you, have a favorite sauce there? I like the fire sauce, but do you have a favorite like hot sauce? Do you like hot stuff?
Um, probably just Cholula.
Okay.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Good table sauce.
Yeah.
How, and what? Okay. Are you one of those people who puts the Cholula on, on everything and maybe not? And if not, do you have, are you a, one of those, do you have a thing that you put on everything?
I don't have a thing.
I do ask that sometimes. Do you have a favorite condiment?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, salsa is probably the best.
Gosh, it's good. It's a great one.
Good one.
Not to, not to steal from Seinfeld, uh, too much, but.
It's a good one. Cause I'm stuck in this ketchup mustard.
You are, but it's fair. I mean, the, they, yeah.
Two teams, but I didn't even think, yeah.
Those are popular.
Uh, I just got one last one. Um, this is a kind of a silly question, but do you have a favorite like fair ride or if not like a Disneyland ride or something like that?
You know, I go to Oaks Park a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a little kids.
I live right there. Yeah. My, my son, Matt worked there as one of his, uh, maybe his first job.
Did you have anybody there when the ride turned upside down?
No, not that, but I rode it uh, since then, you know?
Did you? Wow.
It's their, their roller coaster?
Yeah. The.
No.
Or no?
It was the.
Up and down one?
No, it's the, uh, the rotating arm that does the three sixty always spin. It's the atmosphere.
The atmosphere. Yeah. And it was upside down. It stuck upside down.
It's a good ride. Uh, the roller coaster at Oaks Park is surprisingly good.
It is good. It's quick.
Considering how small it is, it's actually a pretty fun roller coaster.
It is fun. Yeah. It's, yeah.
Did you ever go on the Gravitron? Do you like that thing?
I went on it, I don't know, a few weeks ago. I'll never go on that again.
Really?
Really?
I think I've hit the age.
A few weeks ago?
Oh, wow. Interesting. Would the G-forces or they affect you too much or something?
Spinning, that stuff has never bothered me, but the last few years, like, huh, I'm actually like, ugh, this is unpleasant.
That'd be an interesting uh, experiment because I haven't been on it since I was like a teenager. So maybe.
It probably just means my cardiovascular system's breaking down and can't compensate for the pressure change or whatever.
Trying to go from bike squad to city council.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a favorite ride of any kind?
I love that little roll, I love that little roller coaster at Oaks Park.
Okay.
Um, and I, I mean, the atmosphere is great too, but it's, I don't, I like, I still like the Gravitron. I mean, Mike, I ride it with my kids. Yeah.
I'm, I used to be a big Disneyland nerd, so I, I was thinking of the, like, I, I don't know. I just love Space Mountain, Indiana Jones, all the.
I wish I, I always want to like Space Mountain and then I'm, I don't, I don't know. I don't care for it much, but I love Indiana Jones. Love it.
I mean, I, I haven't been there since the Star Wars.
God, it's good.
I don't know if I'll ever go there again, the lines and everything. It's been, it's been a while since I've been in.
Well, you know, with city council, sorry, you can get a fast pass.
Yeah.
Well, now they got, they're, they got rid of fast pass.
Are you kidding me right now?
Yeah. And now it's, it's like all in an app called the genie pass or something like that.
Okay. Well, you can get a genie pass.
So they just changed the.
But I, no, but I do think it's like monetized now, which is.
It was always monetized. It was always.
Well, no, you get free tickets and that's why I liked about it was like, it's fair for everyone, no matter your income.
No, I know. I know. And you, but you would have to, that's true. And, and everybody was equal and you all stood in line, but the real, that's the only way to make it palatable. Yeah. Is to, um.
I mean, it's kind of.
You've got to skip.
Untrue though, because if you're a celebrity, you can just come in there and they'll shut down the park.
Yeah. Then you got, well, you get a concierge or something, but that costs the price of an attorney or something. You know what? I saw Chris Brown there once.
Did you really?
Yeah, with one of those people. And at one point they were like sitting and eating a hot dog or something. And I turned to my husband and I was like, you know, if I were paying for one of those concierges, all I would be thinking of, I, I mean, all I could hear probably in my brain would be like cash registers opening and slot machines paying out. And the idea that I would just sit down with them and have a hot dog is, I mean, that really shows the Chris Brown's ability to spend money and the amount that he does have because um, I would just be sitting there thinking, okay, this hot dog cost me like five hundred.
Right, right. The security detail.
Do you like a ride at Disneyland?
You know, I, I, I don't know if I've been since like ninety seven.
Yeah. And that was when everybody was equal and you did.
I've been to Magic Mountain since then, but.
It's more the hardcore thrill rides.
Yeah. I don't know.
Um, that, maybe we can end on this too. I forgot. I was gonna ask you about your, what do you call it? Portland Pass, that thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I think that's a cool idea.
Yeah. So the, the basic idea and, and sort of the way I got to this, right, is I would like to see transit rehabilitated.
Yeah.
Which requires both that we enforce and that we bring in more legitimate activity. And it's, it's operating way under capacity, which is a shame because we've sunk a ton of cost into it. So even if we just got more people riding, any way we can get more people on there, it's beneficial. And I'm, you know, also like, what are programs that would appeal to progressives and toward business and to, you know, some stuff that we could like really all get behind. And so my thought here, and this is actually kind of based on a program in Bern, Switzerland, uh, but I think is used, you know, in, in various places, uh, at least in Switzerland, uh, was that when tourists come to Portland, you stay in a hotel in the city limits. Encourage you to stay inside the city limits. Uh, you get free access to transit for the duration of your stay. You know, only some people will use it. Right? But that means we get to like, we get a discount rate per person. Um, and so relatively cheap, paid out of the hotel tax, but now you can fly into Portland from Seattle for your weekend, not rent a car, take the max downtown. We need more people downtown too. So now you've, you've helped displace bad behavior on transit.
Yeah.
You ride downtown, now you stay in one of those hotels, their vacancy rate's bad. And now you're spending money and enjoying all the leisure stuff down there.
Down there, yeah.
And you know, um, if you want something that's environmentally friendly, there's a little something there. It's good for business. So I, I just think.
I think that's brilliant.
Anything we do, it's got a little package deal to it.
Yeah. Cause it, it, it does seem really cool if you're in town for a concert or convention or any, yeah.
There's, I, I, so in researching this, there is actually a program in place for conventions that is similar. So we already have something kind of like that. Um, but just make it everybody who stays in a hotel.
Yeah.
We, we, and, and what's nice is the tax effectively, the person staying in the hotel is paying for it. And it scales like on its own because some more people come, more people pay the tax, you know, more offset or, or payment to try men.
For those hotels as well. Yeah. Um, that's a great idea. Yeah. I just love to hear all the downtown revitalization stuff. Um, yeah. Um. Is there anything else you want to say? Or I was just gonna, yeah, I encourage people to donate still, right? I mean, this will probably come out in October, but.
Yeah, we're, I think we're two hundred more five dollar people away from, uh, from our next match threshold, which would be great.
Yeah.
For just five dollars, right? So it's between five and twenty dollars, city matching, right?
Yep.
And they match it by nine times.
Yeah.
So five dollars turns into forty five dollars.
But that, all that money is also locked up.
Until you get to the two hundred. Yeah.
So really mainly right now, we just need to hit that threshold and, and you know, uh, the money will be there. So really you're just helping unlock forty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So if you like what Eli has to say, just buy him a cup of coffee. Honestly, my kids are at Starbucks all the time and that's a lot less money than whatever they're buying there, whatever drinks they're buying. So, um, it's just not that much.